Good evening, everyone. Nice to call to order the January 11 King George County School Board regular meeting. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
States of America. Republic, which stands. Invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. All right, I apologize. We'd like to confirm Ms. Tolliver to hear you on the line. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to begin with public and employee comments. At this time, it looks like we have two in-person employee comments or sorry, public employee comments who've signed in. So you will have three minutes. I'll call your name and please state your name and address. Ms. De Sprouse.
King George County and marketing teacher and GECA advisor at King George High School. That's 10362 Ridgeway Drive. I want to say again that I love teaching and I miss being with my students. But some front page headlines from the Freelance Star, our only local newspaper. From the Thursday, December 31, health official said interacting with others is too risky. From Friday, January 1, local hospitals limiting visitors, drastic rise in area virus cases leading to more restrictions. From Monday, January 4, cases are topping 5,000 a day in Virginia. Another death reported. From Thursday, January 7, 2021 has not started on a good note, says health officials. And from this morning, Monday, January 11, state sees biggest one-day rise in cases. If you read into these articles, we learn the following, thanks to reporter Kathy Dyson. Dr. Mike McDermott of Mary Washington Healthcare says, stay in home for as long as you can. Do not interact with other humans. It's too risky. If schools were not going back in the fall, how do you go back in person now when the prevalence is higher than it has ever been? And people are dying in higher numbers than ever. Health officials stress the need for people to stay home and avoid spreading, spending time with anyone outside of their immediate households. We have not have enough beds, physicians and nurses to treat patients. Hospitals are already strained. We need to do our part to help by staying home as much as possible. The positivity rate in the area and state continues to set new records. Health officials have said a rate higher than 5% indicates widespread community transmission. What will it take to stop the spread of COVID-19? Governor Ralph Northam said the virus is worse now than it's ever been. The positivity rate is approaching 20% locally. It's going to take a few months for the vaccine to get us back to normal, a few months. Don't share your air with anybody else indoor or outdoor. Assume the air in any space is contaminated. This is the mindset you have to have if we're going to lower the prevalence in our community. This isn't fake news. This is our news here in King George and the Rappahannock Area Health District. Now more than ever, we must weigh the risk versus the benefit. I have a great concern for our staff at each of our buildings and for our children and their families at home. Anyone not showing signs of this virus can pass to others, to pass to others, to pass to others. We see how that works. Although there's been a great deal of time and energy spent, I request that you make a motion for the King George County Schools to remain fully virtual through the rest of the school year. Second act motion and vote yes to this motion. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Ms. De Sprouse. Mr. Thomas Britt.
Hello, all. My name is Thomas Britt. I live at 1730 Snyder Road, Warsaw. I've been teaching at King George High School for about six years now, and I teach biology. And in that, I love science. It is my passion. Back the next six years, I've already taken the GRE. I plan to go actually get my PhD in that science to continue my education. And in that, I've done a lot of different studies. So first off, I want to thank Dr. Benson and Dr. Boyd for their constant updates and emails. They have been fantastic about giving us information about what's going on and what we need to do. So thank you, sir. I appreciate that. All right, we already know that the infection rate is already at 20%. We take that into consideration. We can do a little statistical analysis. Think about it, if we bring only 500 children back into the school at 20%, that's a possibility of 100 students of infection. That's, I would take the low end. Let's go to 65 to 70%. If that possibly does happen within one day of contamination, you have taken that number from 65 to 185. If that goes beyond that, now that we double that again with simple virology. Basically, what we're saying is it's a multiplication factor. All right, so let's keep going. Let's talk about immunology and virology. Anything can actually go through a form of mutation. If you've ever played the telephone game as a child, that's what we're talking about here. It's just simple DNA structures. One simple mutation creates that new vaccine that they have created into a whole new subset. So it's taking a new species and creating a brand-new species that's completely different. You might be able to affect it. It might become less virulent or it might become more virulent. I don't want to take that scare. I don't want to take that scare. So we got possible chances here. We got possible chances of more infectious rates, higher infectious rates. Now, if you want to, I'll be here anytime you want. We can talk about the aspects of immunology, virology and statistical rates of population growth. That's perfectly fine with me. We do need to limit contact. What we do know, it's a moisture-bearing virus. Moisture, think about everything that you come in contact. You have billions of pores in your body that have oils and moisture that's seeping into them constantly. How much do you sweat? How much do you talk? Think about that when you actually go into this type of scenario. Me personally, I agree with Ms. De Sprouse. I think that we have actually created a good structure for virtual learning. It may not be the best in the world, but we are constantly tweaking it and making it better for our students and for our learning. I am just concerned that from my own health issues, because I had some scares earlier this, or the middle of last year, where I had some intestinal issues. I had to have some things removed from my body. It weakened my immune system. I have allergies. I don't know if I can actually take the vaccine yet because I have to consult to my doctor. So I just want to make y'all think about this. What can happen? What can happen? It can happen anybody, at any time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Britt. Mr. Vance, do we have comments online?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Yvonne Richard. I'm a resident of King George, a parent and a teacher. I know as a school board member, you are responsible for ensuring that all King George County School students are receiving an education. I know that many people in our community believe that their children are not getting an education because we are in a virtual environment. I know that my King George County School staff has been working incredibly hard since July to learn how to navigate Canvas, as well as learning how to provide, to provide instruction virtually to our students. Everyone will agree the first few weeks were not easy, and we've all learned together how to navigate this type of instruction. Very few, if any, of the staff had experienced providing virtual instruction prior to this summer. We've also learned how to improve our virtual instruction skills. We understand it isn't a perfect system, but we are truly doing the best we can possibly do. Unfortunately, while we've been working hard to provide the best instruction possible for our students and while keeping ourselves safe from COVID-19, the teachers and staff have been under a different kind of attack. We've been verbally abused by members of the community for wanting to keep ourselves safe. But it's a huge problem and it's taking a toll on our staff. Some teachers like myself have developed medical conditions as a result of the stress that have been placed upon us for simply wanting to stay safe. I know that for myself, I've had shingles two times in the last three months as a result of the stress I have felt concerning my job as a teacher. I know other colleagues have experienced high blood pressure, nausea and anxiety, indigestion, all of, as a result of the way we're being treated. And some of us are just leaving teaching altogether. In a normal pre-COVID school year, my colleagues and I think nothing about walking into the building and being exposed to illnesses and disease. Additionally, we would put ourselves between a gunman and our students if there were to be an active shooter situation. With COVID-19, you are exposed, you must quarantine for 10 to 14 days from date of exposure. And teachers are only granted 10 days of sick leave per year. That means that one exposure can utilize all of our sick leave for the entire school year. And anyone who watches the news knows that often individuals who contract COVID-19 don't fully recover in that time period. And some require hospitalization for extended periods of time. I'm concerned for the impacts of possible quarantines will have on my leave account and ultimately my bank account. It's very upsetting to read that many people in our community believe that teachers should just take the vaccine and go back to work or we should be fired. Some of these same individuals have said that they refuse to take the vaccine themselves and that their children won't be forced to wear a mask upon returning to in-person instruction. As I've reviewed the survey data that's included with the board packet for the meeting tonight, I don't see the large numbers of students planning to return in person. And I am sure some will say that's because the plans are terrible. Or maybe it's because the citizens are realizing that COVID-19 is no joke. Is it that the health department and the school system can no longer keep up with contact tracing and more people are becoming infected? No matter what the reason, I am happy to see so many parents think that virtual instruction is the way to go for the remainder of the school year. The number of cases of COVID-19 in King George in the last months is continuing to increase. And doctors from Mary Washington Hospitals are urging schools to remain virtual. I urge you to follow the advice of the experts. And I urge you to take the care of your most valuable resources that you have here in King George. That would be your teachers and your staff before you have none of us left. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richard. Brian Gregan.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Brian Gregan, 9485 Elm Court. I have two children at King George Elementary. And I was calling today to comment about the in-person learning update that will be presented tonight, which appears to be a vote is pending. It appears to either be a setup to cancel in-person or to delay in-person. And I'll just go through a few of the measures that the, the, the school board and the county has went through to prepare for in-person. You know, the, the multiple times that it's been prepared for and not followed through for. There's Plexiglas, there's masks, there's PPE, there's hand sanitizer. And now there's a $750,000 ionization system to clean the air. When is enough enough? When is it safe enough to return? Will it ever be safe enough to return? Vaccinations are began in Virginia today, 1B vaccinations that will be given to teachers and staff. 11 health districts have, were started today. So I would assume that King George County is not far behind in the vaccination list. So I ask that if you do decide tonight to, to cancel, do, please do not decide to cancel tonight. Delay if anything till the vaccinations can be offered so the teachers have an opportunity to get vaccinated and the staff. I think that might be the prudent answer to the quandary that we're in. But if, if you look at the statistics, Prince William, very similar numbers to us. They're going back. They have a phased-in plan and they've continued with their phased-in plan even with similar numbers to us. So colors may not really mean a whole lot at this point. The, the reality is the kids need to get back in school at some point. And I just, I get concerned as to when that will be. Will it, will ever enough be enough? And, and one more thing before I stop talking. The character education program, word of the month is ironically courage. So I ask that you use some courage and continue with this in-person option so that families have the opportunity to send their kids back. Thank you.
Thank you. Gina Grego. Mr. Vance, do we have the next public comment? Mr. Vance.
All right. So can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Sorry. My name is Barbara Anderson and I am a teacher and a parent of a high school student at King George. I love teaching. It's my 21st year teaching. And teaching virtually has been a big challenge. Unlike many of the teachers, I am kind of eager to go back. It's incredibly difficult to get the energy that we need to really effectively teach our children. Because as you may or may not know, we teachers feed off the energy of the young. That's a very sad, attempted a joke. And this is my life all day long where I try to make little jokes and I don't get any reaction at all. So I'm, I'm just imagining that you're all laughing right now. However, we're scheduled to get our vaccines on the 21st. I live with my 80-year-old mother and I love her and I would hate to bring COVID back to her. We do need to be safe. And so I would suggest that we delay for a couple of weeks, but we cannot keep postponing this. I have twice the number of students failing my classes right now, even in my honors class. Next semester, I teach an AP class and I teach an inclusion class for government, for seniors. They need to pass. My major concern is the plans that have been proposed. As it is right now, the students will get 45 minutes of instruction a day instead of, on four days a week. Instead of 90 minutes instruction, eight days, five days a week. So that's 40% of instruction. For my AP students, that is not nearly enough time to cover the material and learn all the skills in order to take the full AP tests that the AP board has decided need to be given this year. For my inclusion students, for seniors, I would love to think that they would do the work independently on their own. But let me tell you, after 20 years of teaching, that is not going to happen. So I'm very, very worried about both sets of students from both extremes. I support the school board. I know this is a terribly difficult decision and I really appreciate you for taking all the time to listen to us. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. TJ Brandt.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome. My name is TJ Brandt. I live at 1409 Milestone Drive in Fredericksburg, but I'm a fourth grade teacher at Sealston Elementary School. And I'm actually going to be one of the virtual teachers this, this coming quarter. I was selected to be a virtual teacher for some reasons. But I just wanted to just talk tonight, just in favor of the teachers who aren't getting a choice to be virtual and who are severely worried about coming back. And I know that's not everybody, but there's a lot that are and that I've talked to. And there's a severe rise of cases lately. There's no denying that. And it's my belief that we should absolutely remain virtual. And I think it's crazy to try to come back now, if I'm being honest, and that alone should be enough. But at the very least, I think there needs to be some sort of delay in order to prepare your teachers. Just to start off, I think waiting until both rounds of the vaccine are distributed is, I mean, that's, as I said, I think COVID enough is just enough to stay virtual. But if it needs to happen, then we should wait till all of our teachers are 100% vaccinated or that decide that they want to get vaccinated. And everything else aside, your teachers also deserve more time. There's a lot of stuff going on right now, the end of the quarter grading and catching kids up. And I know a lot of us are racing to get things done. And some of us, I know some teachers just found out that they're not, they're going to be teaching a whole different grade. Some teachers found out that they're going to be teaching a whole different subject. And I could tell you, that is not enough time to make that kind of turnaround, to try to, to fit yourself into a brand-new grade or a brand-new subject. That's a lot to take on at the end of the quarter here. And as I said, this is all in addition to the severe health and safety risks. I want to be back with my kids just as much as every other teacher does. I love them all. And I'm tired of the negative comments about teachers, but I cannot and I will not support putting people at risk. So thank you for letting me talk tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Brandt. Donna Zwicker.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening. This is Donna Zwicker. I'm at 10392 Luther Lane in King George, and I am a teacher at King George Elementary School. I would like to start by thanking the board and Dr. Benson. I know through this whole process, including myself, you've been beaten up a little bit and you, I'm sure it's been hard on you. And I would just like to thank you for all you've done in this process. Then I would like to just say that I've taught for many years here and I love King George. I love my job and I love the people I work with. I'm going to be transparent. Not everyone is, but I'm going to be transparent and tell you that I, I will be teaching virtually. So I don't have a big dog in the fight in terms of being fearful about exposure and bringing exposure home to my family. So I would like to pray for the teachers and students that will enter the building eventually during this pandemic. And I just would hope that, that you'll be able to work very well together and stay safe and keep your family safe. I would like to say to the parents, please be honest in your screenings. If you are sending your kids back to school, the kids aren't the ones apparently that are getting sick. But the teachers and their families are something to be considered. I, I for myself have a brand-new granddaughter and it would just kill me to, to put her at risk. But anyway, that's, I digress. And either way, I would like to reach out to parents again and say, you are our partners. And the virtual platform, the success that I have had, I've only been able to have it because of my colleagues, of course, and the parent group that has supported their children. And I, I hope this is one thing that's come through in the pandemic, that parents are our partners. And if you do not support us with what you are doing at home with your children and the way you are raising them and the way you are supporting their education, we of course can't do as good of a job. So I just want to give you that pat on the back and that reminder that you are part of this partnership. Whether your children are being taught in school or you are supporting us virtually, we need you. And I would like to see that it's not an argument or fussing at each other. I would like us to unite and work together on behalf of the children in the community. And those are my comments for tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Zwicker. Mr. Vance, do we have anyone else online? All right, we'll move on. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
Yes. Yes, I'd like to recommend that we take off the in-person learning update from the action item and place it on the discussion item.
Is that a motion?
I guess it's a motion.
Second.
So it has been motioned and seconded that we remove the in-person learning update from the action items and move it to the discussion items. Ms. Panter, do you have any, would you like to have a discussion, comment on the motion?
So, I mean, typically we have action items are to be voted on before they can be discussed. That's the historical procedure for action items. So since we have some, I mean, I don't know what we're voting on if it's just an update. So I think that we should have that based on the discussion item so that we can discuss what the update is. Dr. Benson has a presentation that he would be doing.
Any additional discussion?
I, I second their motion. It is a first reading of, of the in-person learning update. And if it's the intent for the action to be, to an action to delay school, I think it would be best discussed before an action is placed. So we can have feedback. I have a January, I mean, a January 19 start date with all the mitigations. And there will be a meeting next week that wanted to be on an action item.
Mr. Collins, any additional comments? Ms. Hawk?
I understand the issue around having needing to discuss an item prior to our action. However, my concern is that, as I learned very well, a week is not appropriate notice for parents to manage and educators to manage. I do think we need a two-week span of discussion. So I'd like to reserve the opportunity to make a motion for an action tonight, even if we move it to discussion.
So typically in the past, as just historical, since we have no Robert rules, action items have not been allowed to be discussed prior to a motion. But discussion items have been able to have a motion. That's why I think that it should be moved to a discussion item and taken off. Because in order for us to discuss it as an action item, we'll have to have a motion. And, you know, I think that's a little presumptuous that we would add and force an approval, actually, in order to make a motion. Because we're not going to make a motion to disapprove something.
So I have another comment, Mr. Chair.
Hold on, Mr. Collins. Ms. Tolliver, do you have any comments?
I do. So the, the action item is to discuss whether or not we're going to adopt the metrics, is my understanding. It's not a motion on the table to discuss opening, although that could happen. One, my second comment is that although we don't, we did not adopt Robert's rules, based on the fact, in my opinion, that we have a policy that doesn't adopt Robert's rules. And we need to talk about that further at some later date. Motions have been made in the last three or four meetings that were not on the agenda, that were not even discussion items. So I'm not sure why that's an issue tonight. So there's not a motion on the table to delay or stop the opening of school, although that could be made. The action item is to discuss the metrics and whether or not we're going to adopt them.
Mr. Collins?
Well, it appears to circumvent the process by putting in it the, the update in a, in an action item, action. The reason for actions is for motions.
So, Mr. Collins, you, you've circumvented the. Okay.
Mr. Collins finished.
So I think that it would be proper for a discussion item and not circumvent the process.
Additional comments? Ms. Tolliver, did you want to finish your sentiment?
Well, my sentiment is that the process of action versus discussion and versus making motions has been circumvented for the last three meetings.
Okay, so I, I agree that the process has been circumvented. Okay, so I agree that the process has been circumvented. I believe that it is prudent in the sake of the timeliness afforded to, for the planning. Should a change be made to our planning for returning on January 19th, I am in favor of it being an action. However, if we would like to move it to a discussion item with the understanding that it may in fact be voted on, nevertheless, I could support that. Any final comments?
Well, the motion was to move it to discussion item, not to make, not, the motion wasn't to, then it could be changed to an action item after discussion. So you have, you have a motion, you have a second, you have discussion.
Okay, so we'll have a vote. All in favor? Aye? Say aye.
Aye.
That's three.
All, no, I'm sorry. Mine was not an aye, it was all in favor, say aye. So that was two, correct? Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. Motion is lost. Any additional changes to the agenda? All right, moving on to the consent agenda. So this evening in our packet, we have the minutes from the November 23rd, 2020, special meeting work session, as well as the minutes from the December 7th, 2020, special meeting work session. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I move to accept the consent agenda of the minutes of November 23 and December 7 of 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Moving on to the action items. First item in our packet are the policy manual updates. Do you have a motion to accept the policy manual updates?
I move to accept the policy manual updates, IC/ID, JECB, JFC, JFBC, JFCI, JM, JM-RLA.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor of adopting the action items as, inside the policy manual updates as presented?
Aye.
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 Mr. Collins?
This is three.
What?
Wasn't that three?
Yes. Are you not voting?
I'll say aye, but you know, you don't need it after three, right?
Yes, we did.
Well, we're not following any rules.
All right, okay.
Under the auspices, I'm sorry, Ms. Gonzalez.
Yes, all right, Mr. Collins, sentiment duly noted, all opposed. Chair votes aye, motion carries. Moving on to action item B, the Health Advisory Committee revision. Somebody in our packet, pull it up. So I have a, a motion to accept the Health Advisory Committee revision.
For summary?
If it helps, Madam Chair, I think this is simply to add Ms. Christie Bouyet in place of Ms. Dolly Johnson, who has left that committee, that's all.
Yes, that's correct. All right.
You need a motion, Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes, please.
Whether we approve the Health Advisory Committee revision to replace one employee with another nurse who's come on board.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I thought you didn't. Thank you. All right, moving on to the in-person learning update. So considering, I know Dr. Benson has a presentation prepared for us. May I ask that we get that presentation and then we can consider a motion?
Excuse me, Madam Chair, but, so we just went through two action items, and we made a motion and voted on them, and now we're going to discuss an action item. So that is completely out of policy procedures?
Okay, fully noted. So that being said, although the public does not have a copy of it at this point in time, we all have a copy of Dr. Benson's recommendation. So do I, do we have a motion to, to offer in-person learning to priority learners only until such a time as our risk of transmission qualifies as a higher rather than highest category?
Why, why do we have?
So I have a question. Where is that?
Where that comes from?
Where did you just spoke? Where, where are those?
So in the King George County Schools in-person learning update that Dr. Benson provided.
And that is provided to all of the public? So we're going to be voting on something that the public has not even seen, nor was, have we even been able to brief, because I believe it was emailed to us around 5 o'clock today.
Madam Chair, I would like to be able to have Dr. Benson give us information about an action item that we have had many precedents for. And I would like to ask some questions, but I'd like first for Dr. Benson to have his discussion, for want of a better word.
So all of the action items in the historical past of any time that I've been on a board for the last three years counting, we have never had a discussion prior to a motion of an action item.
That is not true, Ms. Panter. I have...
Yes, it is.
I personally have discussed action items before a vote.
Madam Chair?
Yes, I believe this is strength in the topic at hand. Yes, understood. Past precedence perhaps has not been handled properly at all times. That being said, I would like to ask for Dr. Benson to provide the in-person learning update at which point in time, maybe there can be a motion made.
I'm sorry, I missed something. Why would he not present it? It's on the agenda.
The issue, Ms. Tolliver, is that it is listed as an action item and not a discussion. Challenge, I understand. I would like to ask Dr. Benson to go ahead with his superintendent's recommendation, which, or his King George County Schools in-person learning update, which will conclude with the recommendation.
Madam Chair, may I interrupt?
Certainly, Mr. Collins.
Could, could we at least agree upon to address the chair and ask for the floor before blurting out comments?
Certainly, Mr. Collins. That would be excellent. Thank you. Dr. Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. In the, in the board packet released to you last week, I introduced to you a concept or a decision-making matrix for your consideration. I also released information regarding our current health metrics according to the CDC and BDH dashboard for school metrics. And tonight I have, or today I took time to update the information with our metrics as of today and to also provide for you the latest registration response data for your consideration in terms of an update regarding in-person learning. So the first bit of information, go ahead, next slide, John, if you would, are simply tables that contain the responses we have received as a result of our most recent requests from families. The request from families was worded in such a way as to allow families, if they did not respond, to allow that to indicate a want to remain with virtual learning. So it's if presumptive, but the spirit there was we'd rather not, if they, if they simply didn't want to return the survey, we understood that to mean that their choice was to stay virtual. So you'll see the numbers there that are listed. I won't read every grade level for every school, but I have provided for you and for the public the responses that we have received as of probably 3 o'clock this afternoon, when I pulled it off of the shared drive. Next slide, John. Next, I've provided you the CDC indicators, health metrics. And I'd like to say that where I'm leading is to provide you the background information as it relates ultimately then to that, to that decision matrix regarding the instructional modality for our school division. So you can see I've provided you indicators. The bottom half of this page is the table that provide, that shows you the today's metrics for core indicator number one and core indicator number two. I've also in the top half provided for you, just for comparison purposes, the very same metrics on December 7th, the day that the decision was made by this board to return to in-person on January 19th. So that information is provided for you. You can see that in December, we had all divisions, not just King George, but all divisions that are, that neighbor us, that we've been continuing to watch, given our employees, or about half our employees do not live in King George. Save Caroline County at that time. Caroline was just in the moderate risk with regard to positivity rate, at 6.7%. All other school divisions, or all other counties, rather, for 14-day case incident for 100,000 and for positivity at that time, were in the highest risk of transmission in schools. Again, these are metrics pulled from the Virginia Department of Health. You'll see then down below, you can, you can look and see that Caroline, in fact, has joined now the other school, other counties. In terms of positivity, all counties that we've continued to monitor are in the highest level, highest risk level of transmission in schools at this point. And you'll see that not only do we remain in the highest level, but the numbers themselves have increased significantly, almost a third, it seems, across the board. And positivity now for King George is right on the cusp of 20%. So that's just a little background in terms of the health metrics as of today. Next slide, please, John. Core indicator number three, and I presented this information to you last time, deals with what we control in terms of our mitigating strategies. And there are five mitigating strategies listed across the left-hand column that we have continued to assess and continue to work to ensure we can do our very best to implement these strategies to mitigate risk. We've discussed these in previous meetings. We do, I feel confident that we, we can implement three of the, three of the five strategies correctly and consistently, that being the consistent use of masks, hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette, and cleaning and disinfection. I feel like we can, we can implement those correctly and consistently. The two that we've discussed, of course, are social distancing to the largest extent possible. We know that number-wise, it would be difficult in all some settings to adhere to a six-foot social distancing, which is the gold standard, but we would adhere to the three-foot with masks, standard that's also included in the DOE guidance. Contact tracing in collaboration with our local health department is another mitigating strategies. We know that because we are doing a majority of the contract tracing ourselves as a school division with employees, presumably we'd be doing the same thing with students. Our local health department, of course, the good news is that next week we are in category 1B, and we are scheduled to receive vaccines as school division staff, so that's good news. But I certainly anticipate that our BDH staff, as limited as they may be, will be consumed with, with the vaccine phase of the response and less apt to be able to complete all the contact tracing that may be necessary. So for that reason, those two are in the, in the category that says we can implement correctly, but they would be inconsistent with. So again, just background information, and I'm headed towards the matrix. I want to provide that information. Next slide, please, John. This slide is information related to our staff capacity. We have several staff, and this is a table that quantifies the total number of staff that we have who are medically exempt because of conditions that their doctors or physicians have approved. We've also included employees who may be on family medical leave for other reasons. And then we have today's number in the column that says absent due to quarantine at this point. So the far right column, you'll see total absent, and then that represented as a percentage of the staff at each school. So you can see running down that list that we have, you know, roughly 15 to 27% given, depending on the school site, as an impact due to COVID or other health reasons at our schools. Just as a comparison, at the bottom, we thought it might be helpful you to see that our typical, in fact, of this week last year in a non-COVID environment, those were the, the numbers for that week that we had as far as an absentee school. So you can see, if you, if you compare the total absent in the top table to the numbers provided in the bottom table, you can see the difference in terms of impact to staffing at our school. So next slide, please, John. So why have I presented this information for you? And that is to try to lay a foundation so that you can, you can see, or at least evaluate the usefulness of this proposed matrix as far as a guide for decision-making. The matrix essentially runs across two axes. The top one, or across horizontally, looks at transmission risk. We looked at the CD, BDH, health indicators. So we're looking at transmission risk there as a point of evaluation. The vertical axis on the left looks at school impact. And that school impact includes any COVID outbreaks, which I'm happy to say we've had none. Save one, I think, in the fall that dealt with two employees only. But we've been, outside of that, we've had no outbreaks in our schools. The staffing capacity, I've provided you the numbers for your consideration there. And then our capacity to implement mitigation strategies. And you have that data, the data that just reviewed with you as far as the five mitigating strategies. In the, in the, in the, in the body of the matrix, then, you'll see that there are several different descriptors that include different groups of learners and, and modality of instruction respective to that group of learners. If you look at the top left, then, if we were to say we had lowest or low or even moderate risk in terms of the health metrics, but we had low impact in terms of staff, we would simply drop down to that first box, and we would say that in-person learning, to the extent feasible, given mitigating strategies, would be provided for all students. The same would hold true for the box just below that, even if we went to moderate impact of staff, but we remain with lowest, low or moderate risk with health metrics. We'd have the same in-person learning to the extent feasible, given our ability to implement the mitigating strategies and our capacity with staff. As you move left, or you move to the right and downward, then, you'll see that those correspond with different levels of impact, either moderate or high impact with regard to schools, and then higher or highest risk with regard to the health metrics. Down below, I've put a, put a few descriptors in there. The first key one is, who do we include in terms of priority learners? And we've talked since, really, late spring last year about our youngest learners, specifically our K-2 students, our students who are served through special education, who receive their in-person services currently this semester, because those services can't be provided virtually, our students for whom English is a secondary language. And we have also included locally our students who are, who are identified as at risk. And we know from past meetings recently that our middle school and high school has been inviting students based on their academic performance and encourage them to come to in-person sessions at the, at the school for assistance. The second asterisk, again, I'll just, for our public, remind them that the second asterisk in this chart refers to mitigating strategies, and those strategies weren't developed by us. While it was not a creation of mine, rather, those mitigating strategies have been the mitigating strategies associated with core indicator three as, as publicized through the Center for Disease Control and our Virginia Department of Health. So that's really the the basis for the matrix, I offer this just for your consideration. I know making decisions with with information part and parcel is difficult sometimes to pull together. And for you to assess, so I simply offer this as a way to kind of structure the thinking, to structure the assessment and to ultimately then help. Our public understand why certain decisions are made or what those decisions are based on in terms of the variables in play. Next slide, please, John. So if I were this evening and I'm I'm going to illustrate for you, if I were to assess our current situation. Based on the data that I presented, as far as school impact, I think at best, right now, we're experiencing moderate impact. And I do believe it's obvious that that from a health metric standpoint across the horizontal axis, we're at the highest risk. So if I follow that table along, that leads me to to be advised that in person would be provided for our priority learners only at this point. But that hopefully when our health metrics improve, we can move back to the left. And if we can get back into that higher risk category, I know that sounds odd, but from the highest to the higher risk. That would be a relaxed or a moderation of those health metrics, then we could expand in person learning. From our priority learners to other learners and other grade levels as capacity would allow. So I hope that helps you in terms of trying to structure thinking, maybe utilize this to to guide your thinking. But anyway, I put that out for your consideration and last slide, John. I do have a recommendation to this board for your consideration, here are the factors, the variables that I believe are evident. We have had a change in the core indicators, one and two since December seventh, as I as I've prevented or presented to you. Has as have all of our surrounding divisions. From in in Caroline's case, the higher to now everyone is in the highest risk of transmission in schools. The impact of COVID is that impact of COVID that is having on our schools and our division staffing. It's varied from school to school, but overall, in talking with principals, they provided me descriptions of how. They are going to have to compensate for the loss of staff who are out due to COVID related exemptions. I'll try to summarize that by saying that remember that we will have several teachers. Who will be teaching virtually, who will be teaching from afar, not all are married or matched to virtual students only. Some will be teaching from afar, but will be. Pumped into a room by video for their students. We would obviously need an adult in the room to supervise students in addition to that student. So in a nutshell, all of the schools I know are going to have to compensate for those teachers who will be. Virtual teaching to a live in person audience. So that's a stressor that that from a personnel standpoint, coverage standpoint, all schools are going to experience and they're going to have to adjust. Accordingly, they are also to accommodate both modalities. They are prepared and and continue to prepare to support both by making any necessary teacher changes. Any necessary assignment changes for students to ensure that we are within our mitigating strategies guidelines. And to also ensure that every child has then quality education in terms of a teacher teaching their class. So there are adjustments there down in more to distill it down a little bit further, the very week. That we are said to come back will be closing one reigning period. So from an operational standpoint, there is some a busy week, as one of our public speakers mentioned. That week to try to transition the names of students from one teacher to another, in some cases transitioning teachers from one grade level. To another to teach another grade level. Those are just the the adjustments that we have to make to make the in person learning work administratively or operationalizing. I do think that the good news is we have, as I said before, we've experienced zero outbreaks lately in our schools. And we have invested wisely to provide quality. A quality air air quality ionization system in our schools, which I'm happy to report. Has been installed and is operational in all of our spaces as we sit here today. So with all that in mind, again, I think that right now we have moderate impact in our schools, we have highest impact regrettably as far as our our transmission matrix. And so my my recommendation would be that. That this board consider bringing back during that week our our priority learners only. And that we continue to assess those health metrics and our impact so that we can look for opportunities shortly thereafter, try to augment and bring other student groups in. I understand and I respectfully, I'm not trying to get ahead of the board, I'm simply be obligated to provide you that information for your consideration. And we will certainly move forward with whatever the board. Or what with what the board has already approved, or if there's any amendment to that, should the board make it this evening? Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. Are there any questions for Dr. Benson?
Ms. Panthier.
Ms. Collins.
Are the medical appears the medical exemptions are included in the percentage of absence? Is that incorrect or correct? So if you have a medical exemption, you're not really absent.
They are included as far as and and the context there, my point being is that while they are able to work from afar. And that's the example I was trying to illustrate, while they'll be teaching from afar, being projected in the classroom. We we don't have that person physically there supervised students, so we will need to bring in an additional person. To to supervise students as they are taught by that person from afar. So you're right that they are included, but it does not negate the need for an additional person to help supervise the class. In which they're not physically seated or physically there.
Any additional questions?
I have a question.
Ms. Collins.
The you mentioned in core indicator number three, contract facing collaboration with local health departments. You mentioned that that the health department is focused on vaccines. And this and I was curious about the speculation, you said they about contact tracing. Do you know for a fact that they don't have the people that do the contact tracing?
That's my presumption, given we had a call last week. Where we heard from, it was a joint call with Virginia Department of Health representatives. So you're correct, no, that's simply my presumption that they will be more involved with the vaccination aspect of their work. Given the discussion we had that day, I do know factually that we, Ms. Fisher and a few of her colleagues. Have been working the majority of that initial contact tracing. We're unaware from feedback we've gotten from employees of contact tracing really beyond that point. Or if it if it has occurred, it's been limited or at least not been made known to us. So that that's why my assessment there.
Thank you, no further questions, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions for Dr. Benson?
Yes, Madam.
Ms. Hall.
Dr. Benson, do you have approximately how many at risk students are attending at the middle school and high school? Have a round number?
It has, it's fluctuated, I think at one point at the high school, they had sixty to seventy five. They concluded that in preparation for the in person learning Friday of last week at the high school. And at that point, the number had dwindled, I think to twenty something at that point. But I would I would still reserve that opportunity, I would hope we could reserve the opportunity to bring students in at the secondary level. As we're able to get to come in for that additional assistance.
Ms. Panthier, any questions? No questions.
Madam, I have another one.
Ms. Hall.
Dr. Benson, are there any appropriate calendar dates which appear to coordinate with with a delay? Such as a marking period or a or are we sort of off the the calendar?
Are you talking about in in the week of the nineteenth, during the week of the nineteenth?
No, 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 looking forward, looking forward, if we're discussing a delay, are there any appropriate points in time? When it might be easier to transition students back in?
I'd have to think about that, I I will relate to you that we that I had a call with other superintendents in the state with Dr. Lane last week. And he talked about and he urged superintendents to try to make assessments or make decision, not make decisions. But encourage localities to make decisions, not in large blocks of time. But to to assess as we move into, you know, a hopeful, I think a hopeful several months in terms of, you know, vaccine and. Perhaps and maybe I'm just looking at the glass half full, but hopefully improve metrics. That we reserve the ability to make more formative decisions along the way so that that when the time comes. We are able to maximize in person learning and I think everybody wants to do that, they just want to do that safely. So to kind of predispose and say, well, the third nine weeks would negate perhaps opportunity between now and then. If things improve or if our the the elements that I talked about in the matrix are such that it would allow for us to add, you know, even even. Smaller or sub subgroups of students back into the mix. So I I'm hesitant a little bit to answer it only because I don't want it to be taken as if we if we weren't to return the nineteenth, we would have to wait till the end of the third nine weeks. I don't think that's the case, I would encourage the board. To to continue to assess formatively along the way.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Tolliver, do you have any questions for Dr. Benson?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Benson, so to clarify, the board packet on page thirty five, which I know is also in your modality matrix here. So just to clarify, so priority learners does in fact include K through two at this time, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct, okay. And so does the does the nineteenth as a as a return date make sense? I know previously in November, there was discussion about whether, because that's the day after a holiday, but so if that made sense during that week. I know last time we shifted it a couple of days.
It it made sense at that time, I think since I've gotten feedback, I'm sure that you may have got some feedback. Teachers have looked at whether, you know, if we have two groups of students, that obviously sets up one group. A Tuesday, Friday group to receive two days during the initial week and one group to receive one day. We do have, again, I mentioned the vaccines are scheduled for that very same week for teachers. We do have some administrative aspects in current terms of reassigning students. And in some cases, the speaker had mentioned teachers would be moving from one grade level to another. I don't think, I think it would make sense, knowing what I know now and didn't know in December, that we look at. If you were to look at Thursday as a start date and make Tuesday and Wednesday two back to back asynchronous days of learning, that would be helpful.
So that would be Thursday, the twenty first?
Correct.
I have one additional question, so when Mr. Collins asked about the 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 total absences of staff, that sort of thing. And so the comment on the substitute situation, I know previously that was a concern. Are we, what does the staffing situation look like now with the number of absent and quarantined staff members and the available substitutes? To cover those positions?
I know, Ms. Yuzerski and her staff have been working to make sure we recruit recruit and train as many substitutes as we can.
I'm sorry, I can't hear. I'm sorry, is it on?
Is this my turn on John?
It doesn't sound like it's on.
Okay.
Can you hear me now? I can hear you now. Okay, okay, so let me just back up so you can hear everything. We surveyed our subs on October the twenty ninth, we sent out a survey to a hundred and twenty nine. People who we have on our sub list to ask who would be willing to complete COVID training. Who would be and then who would be willing to come in our buildings and sub during this time. And we received a response from thirty nine of them saying they would come in. We also, couple of weeks ago, looking at the situation, knowing that we were going to have to have. Some extra supervision in the buildings to cover the classrooms of the teachers who were teaching virtually. We went ahead and told each school, go ahead and procure some long term subs. We gave each school a different number to let them come in every day. So we have, we know we have some extra coverage on hand. That took up twenty one of our thirty nine subs. So we are down to eighteen, we just closed our last. Advertisement for subs on the thirty first of December. We had eight people apply, we are in the process of screening and interviewing. Doing all those things, and so that would take us up to twenty six people on hand to cover our day to day sub needs. So can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Ms. Tolliver.
Thank you, um, so on any given day, how many subs do you need? Okay, that information that Dr. Benson had in his packet this evening. I I did the data from last year of this week. And we averaged on four days of that week, we had twenty eight people out and on one day we had twenty seven people out. And how many subs you have available right now? Twenty six. Okay, okay, thank you, Ms. Yuzerski.
Anything? So I guess I would ask, so how do how do the, I guess I could do the math and not make sure I follow. So how did the total, the numbers of total absent staff match up with the substitutes? So it looks like they're a lot more absent than the twenty available subs, but am I not, I might be missing something, what is that, how do they correlate?
It it could, it's hard to project what might be out in the coming days or just for normal routine absences. I don't have my sheet in front of me, I wish I did. So if you look at, for instance, let's just look at the high school, okay? So right now, we have twenty seven people out at the high school. Last year, their average daily absence rate was five. So if you add that, it's thirty two people out a day.
So the twenty seven absent are are you including the medically exempt in there?
Yes.
So they're not really.
They're not, they're not necessarily absent, but they are people for whom we have to provide coverage. You see what I'm saying? There has to be some type of supervision for our teachers who are teaching virtually. That they are teaching, the the kids who come for in person are sitting in the classroom. There has to be an adult in there to to supervise those students.
In some of those cases, I I think that may be, there was certainly, you know, we had, some of the teachers mentioned this earlier this evening, that they may be teaching a virtual only class. So certainly those teachers would reduce this number slightly, but not not entirely. So for the the teachers included or the staff included in that total. Who are teaching, but particularly at the secondary level, who may be teaching both modalities. While they're teaching from afar, they're not able to supervise students personally. We need somebody there to supervise the kids that are in that class, learning from someone who's being broadcasted in the classroom. I think that's where you get the discrepancy between the subs that she's talking about. And then if you added all these numbers up, you're certainly going to be well above the twenty, whatever that number was.
Twenty seven plus five. The the other thing, I just want you to note that that the total number on that left hand column, so at the high school that says a hundred and two. That is just teachers and paras, that does not take into, those are basically the people for whom we would have to find coverage. That's not, they have a hundred and thirty nine staff members total. But we typically don't procure subs for admin, therapist, health force. So but we we, there are times when we depend on them for supervision.
So the the medically exempt teachers, pairs, they're teaching virtually, right?
Some of them are, some of them are working with small groups of children.
So after in person, they would be working with a larger number, correct?
I'm not sure I follow you.
It depends on the level, in some cases.
It depends on the level.
Twenty percent of division. In person, then you have to have twenty percent of. Teachers teaching those kids.
No, and and that's where that's where I understand your logic there.
If they're not in the school, then you don't need supervision.
Right, and I understand the logic there based on just using the percentage, however, it doesn't play, you know, in a scheduling situation. It doesn't fall out that nicely where you can, if you have a twenty percent of the students attending, you only need twenty percent of the staff to teach. It just simply because of the way students are assigned to different sections and courses, and I'm speaking primarily from the at the secondary level. You may have a, you obviously will have a mix of virtual and in person students assigned to the same teacher. Who's teaching, who's needing to accommodate students in both modalities, we simply don't have, it doesn't fall out that nicely where you can say these two teachers. We simply don't have, it doesn't fall out that nicely where you can say, these two teachers teach nothing but virtual. These two teachers teach all the students who have elected to remain in-person. The numbers just don't fall out that, that nicely.
So even the in-person, there's, in the high school, in the middle school, it's all set up and they're taking different classes from virtual teachers. So, um, you know, just because one's taking history and one's taking math or what, doesn't mean you have to have three separate monitors for them. You only need one monitor for the fifty or a hundred, whatever, there for that particular time period.
Well, I, I think it depends on the class and what it is there's there. I know the middle school and high school, they also have the internet cafes going on in the cafeteria. Whereas you probably could put one person in there to monitor that. And there are lots of subjects and classes going on. But if they are in classrooms, if they're in a classroom, and this is world history in eighth grade, and I've got four kids in there taking world history, there has to be some type of supervision in there.
So these numbers that we have in front of us, if you do all the math, up and down, you mind if I ask another question?
No.
Um, you do it up and down, the, the, it looks worse than what it really is. And, and then you give us the sub number and the long-term sub and then what's available. You, you really can't put the medically exempt, all of them into the, a percentage of absence because that's not always the case. Just because they aren't teaching in person, that doesn't mean the child is here to monitor. It, it, it doesn't all go together.
So I, I would say that I certainly understand your point there and we can, admittedly, this is raw data. I think it was provided in the spirit of just one piece of that, of those three pieces to try to assess school impact. And given the, the qualitative descriptions from school to school, there's certainly impact and it varies from school. I know the high school in particular is pretty, pretty stressed in terms of trying to find, we've mentioned, I don't want to say bodies, but, but people to cover the supervision need adequately. There's variance, and I think that's what I was trying to do is to say, okay, well, here's data that's related. It doesn't necessarily flip the switch on and off, but it is an aspect to consider in trying to look at where we fall on that vertical axis. And that's why, you know, I don't think we're in the highest impact, but I do think we're moderately impacted for some of the very same reasons you're saying, Dr. or Mr. Collins. You know, we have to look at it qualitatively, let the quantitative numbers then be translated into qualitative impact at the school. And, and that's a challenge, there's no question. I don't think you can, it's as simply as add these numbers up, divide by three and that lets you fall. I don't, I don't think you can do that. I think the challenge here is for us to make a qualitative decision based on different data points. And we can interpret and have varied, inferred differently from person to person as to how those data points might impact the school. But ultimately, that's why this data is, is collected and, and offered. But I think your, your points are valid, that it's not ma, it's not being presented to make it look worse than it is. It's simply raw data and we can, we can dive deeper and say, well, of those, you know, twenty-two, you know, fifteen are able to, to teach virtually, but that doesn't again negate the need for supervision in classrooms that would, that there's children who are, be in-person would need.
So the twenty-four medically exempt teachers and pairs. So on, on a normal course of a day, teachers and pairs have additional responsibilities. So they are being exempt from additional responsibilities if they're on a medical exemption. So if you, if they have two duty periods, which could, shouldn't they be required to then have two classes or one class or some type of other duty or representation for the teachers that are coming in person? Have in-duty, have duty obligations?
So there, there are two periods where they're not, where they're not. You're talking about a teacher perhaps who has in a, you know, over four, well, I'm thinking of the high school level, but they have two, let's say just follow your example, two unencumbered periods for teaching. But if they were in person, they would have, one would be a duty assignment and the other would be their planning for instruction. Is that what you're talking about?
Quite often, like you'll have lunch duty and other duties. So if you're medically exempt, are you exempt from duties?
You would be. You, I mean, you physically wouldn't be in the building, so it'd be impossible to perform a duty. When I, I want to, duty in the context of lunch duty or that type of thing. I imagine that the schools could utilize those people during that time period for some other aspect of what we're doing. And that's, I have to talk with the principals about how they would utilize that extra period, so to speak.
So can I make a comment, Mr. Collins and?
Oh, no. Ms. Ms. Tolliver, hold on.
Just a comment on what Mr. Collins was talking about.
Tolliver, just a second. Please let the conversation complete.
Oh, okay.
I was just, I was just looking at, so that's, if there's a hundred and two teachers, that's a, at least a hundred and two duty hours, you know, available.
Well, that, that includes.
Pairs too.
You're looking at pairs and drivers and monitors as well. That's total for King George High School?
There are total one hundred and two teachers and pairs at King George High School.
Okay, so that's a hundred and two hours of available duty.
We also have to, and I, I do know at the high school, and I think one of the reasons why the sub number looks low for them is because we actually pay our high school, our secondary teachers to cover extra classes on their planning periods. That's what I was going to say, I'm sorry. We do, and we probably will still have to utilize them to help out in that way too. So from my experience at the high school, they use teachers, as Mr. Collins was saying, I'm just clarifying and validating what he said, that when teachers have a planning period, they're often, they have a duty period, so they cover the front office or they cover the mailroom or they cover some other part of the building during their off times of teaching. So he's correct in saying that.
Okay. Any additional questions?
Just one more.
Ms. Collins?
So when you, so teachers now, in-person teachers are teaching additional classes in their duty time, right?
Well, not just now. I, I mean, I want to make sure that, that we understand. So let's take a high school teacher. If we have a teacher, we have four sections of world language to staff that we have the need for, for staffing. But we, a teacher, a typical teacher would teach three periods and have one planning period. Rather than hire an addition or need to find an additional teacher. And in many cases, these days with the limited number of teachers, we simply can't find them. We will offer to teachers to, to do their planning outside of their workdays or the traditional workday in exchange for compensation for picking up an additional section of class. That helps the school division because we then have a certified teacher to teach the class. But we recognize that teacher still is going to have the obligation to plan for those classes that he or she is teaching. Therefore, we compensate them additionally, given they'll be dedicating time beyond the school day to, to plan. Whereas they would have been planning in the, in the, in the place of where they would have been planning, they're now teaching an additional section of class.
What is, how many are doing that?
We'd have to ask each school.
Out of a hundred and two.
Well, I, I don't, I'm not sure I'm tracking with the connection to a hundred and two.
A hundred and two is the number of the high school of teachers and pairs. And so how many of those teachers and pairs are teaching additional, additional classes out of a hundred and two teachers?
Okay.
We, we could get that information for you. And again, that's one of those variables that changes every day. It can change every day.
Strictly from a coverage standpoint, from an assignment, as I said, assignment to teach, that's obviously made semester by semester to contract with them to teach the extra section. But in, in terms of coverage, you know, it's, it's not, not at all unusual for principals to need to, to find folks to cover when they have absences in certain days that are excessive or exceed the norm and they can't find subs from outside to cover. They need to look inward in terms of staff, utilize those staff to cover classes from a supervision standpoint.
And that would be the same, you need people to monitor. So out of that hundred and two, you have available monitors of, I don't know how many hours, because I don't know how many.
Okay, I, I, I think I see where you're going then. So of that, you would try and pull out the number that would be teaching, that would not be available to cover somewhere else to try to still it down to the number that may be available to plug into supervision needs, is where you're going.
That was my point, and, and the medically exempt couldn't be exempt from duties either.
Yeah, I don't, obviously the, the duty would have to change, but that would be up to the principal. If they had a need that they could fulfill virtually, so to speak, as a duty, I'm sure they would utilize those employees. It, it's simply obviously impossible to do something at a school site when you're, you're not there. That's all.
Okay, Ms. Tolliver, do you have a, an additional question?
So I was just concurring with Mr. Collins. I, I'm not sure about the hours and the numbers he was quoting, but, um, I think that, I, I know at least at the high school, during planning periods, teachers are assigned other duties. So I think his question was if they're medically exempt, they're also not covering those other duties. Not necessarily monitoring students or teaching another class, but maybe they're doing, as I said, front office duty or some other, they, they have duties in the building that they're assigned to during their planning periods. So those positions are now being absent because the teacher is medically exempt. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Ms. Penn, you have additional questions? No, I'm done, thank you. Ms. Hall?
No, thank you.
Okay. If there are, Mr. Collins, any final comments?
Comments?
Questions, sorry, Dr. Benson?
No, no, no more questions.
Okay, so if there are no additional question, Ms. Tolliver? Ms. Tolliver, you have?
Sorry, I was just coughing, I turned my microphone off, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. So then in accordance with Dr. Benson's recommendations as presented, do we have a motion to proceed with in-person learners as defined in the King George instructional modality assessment matrix presented by Dr. Benson on Thursday, January twenty-first, if I understand correctly? And for the board to reevaluate on a date such as January twenty-fifth, also in accordance with Dr. Benson's recommendation?
So you, you have, we have already made a January nineteenth date. And we're supposed to be discussing the metrics of in-person learning update. So we can still continue with those metrics, but it doesn't change the date. So parents can still send their children to school if they wish and still have them be taught virtually. They, they, the percentage of absences is, uh, I think is grossly overestimated in this form. If you look at the number of professionals available, a hundred and two, sixty-eighty-six, sixty-one, sixty-seven and thirteen, and that's not including the sixty-six of transportation, you have all those hours, um, you can obligate for duties. We, we, we talk about on this board about equality all the time. And this is where the rubber meets the road, where these kids that are struggling need to come in. I'm sure you've all received the emails that I've received, people begging to have their kids go back to school. And there's other ones begging for their child not to go back to school, so they have the choices to do that. So the other part of buying in for everyone was the, was the staff. And so we've mitigated those circumstances with the staff. We have people that are medically exempt, that have gone their exemptions. We, we have put on all these other things to mitigate. So I, I don't think that a motion would be proper to, to entertain a, a different date at this time.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Hall?
If we accept the learning, um, the, uh, matrix that Dr. Benson has presented based on the impact and the transmission risk, then the only students who are eligible to attend beginning January nineteenth are the in-person priority learners. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct? So that is K-two, that is special education students and English as a second language students and those identified as at risk of failing at the secondary level. Is that correct?
I only want to clarify that the special education students is really the students who receive special education services, who were receiving in-person services during the first semester.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We may have students who have other services.
Yes.
Who are not right now in-person. So I just want to make sure that, that's clarified.
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry, let, let me, let me clarify that. So the priority students, the priority learners would include students in grades K-two, students served through special education who received in-person services first semester, students who received services through English as a second language and those identified as at risk of failing by the middle school and high school staff. Is that correct? Those were the students who would be eligible to return January nineteenth or twenty-second or whatever date is appropriate.
That is correct.
So how about the kids that are getting, failing one through six? And how about the, the folks that have expressed through the survey that want their children to go back? I mean, please justify to me how that's okay.
So, Mr. Collins, I think that Dr. Benson's presentation did justify that. It's okay for them to remain virtual based on the numbers of coronavirus cases and the rising numbers of at-risk people health-wise.
So I, I just want to make sure I heard them correctly, there's zero in the school system at this time.
No, there are kids in school system right now. There are kids in school right now.
No, no, there's zero cases.
Zero cases?
Yeah.
What are you saying?
There's, uh, three, there's eight people that are absentee for quarantine.
I guess that's, you're reading from the chart, that's been read through the chart, okay? Of those eight, are you saying, I'm not sure I'm tracking with your question. There's eight cases of COVID?
I'm not saying that, I'm saying there's eight people absent that are quarantined according to this chart. But how many, how many employees have COVID or reported to COVID? There's zero, there's zero COVID.
Because they're not there.
About the community, we're talking about the schools.
I'm not sure I'm tracking with what you're saying of the people that are quarantined?
No.
No, you're not. You're saying, you're assuming that everybody quarantined is not COVID-positive.
I'm not assuming anything.
You're wanting to know the number of employees we currently have that have been, that are quarantined as a result of positive COVID?
I don't think that's available to me for.
Not this instant, I can find out.
No, I don't think it's available for, in, in that a type of violation or something.
The names of the people, the simple numbers, if that's what you're looking for, I can tell you that. We, we, I guess we have information related to it, if you want it, it's up to you.
Now, but there are two individuals who we are pending. They're trying to get information from a physician at one of the schools that we are, that could very easily be added to this quarantine list for tomorrow. Every day that quarantine list changes, because not everybody goes on quarantine the same day. They don't all come off the same day.
Right.
So the quarantine list changes every day. Of that list right now that you have those in front of you, one, two, three. So remember I said two are pending, okay? Seven of them are because they've been exposed to it, three of them are positive. That's today.
Okay.
So that could change tomorrow. Does that help you a little bit with that?
I was just stating the facts, you know, out of the six hundred and five employees that we have, there's eight teachers that are not, um, in pairs that aren't actively at work that are quarantined. That was my, that was my whole point. I'm saying that you all have received emails. I mean, you're listed on the top of them, your school board and Dr. Benson. Please send my child to school. I still have to survey. I want to go back to school. Please, please, please. And then you have the ones that say, please don't send me to school. I'll stay virtual. I love it. So I don't understand why we can't do that. We got the plan. Why would we go back on it? People, we have yo-yoed people so much here. I mean, it's time to, yes, I understand that that in King George, the numbers are going up, absolutely. And you make those decisions based upon that. But at this time, if you don't want to go, you can stay virtual.
But, Mr. Collins, that doesn't, that doesn't allow the staff to have that decision. You're only talking about students. Staff who don't want to go back because they're afraid of being at risk, you're not giving them the same option to remain virtual?
Well, I'm afraid to be, I'm in high risk myself and do I still?
So am I. That's why I'm home right now.
Okay, Ms. Oliver, just a second.
No, I'm okay.
And I still have to do the things I have to do, you know? I have to go to the store. I have to do these things. You know, there's teachers that are medically exempt not to come in because they have a doctor's note for they're at risk. The other ones don't, and there's mitigations for them. We've spent millions of dollars to mitigate so they can have a buy-in to feel comfortable.
Okay, understood, Mr. Collins. And so Dr. Benson has provided us with his recommendation as the superintendent of our school division, and so I will ask again, do we have a motion to proceed with in-person learners as defined in the King George instructional modality assessment matrix presented by Dr. Benson on Thursday, January 21st? And for the board to reevaluate on a date such as January 25th in accordance with Dr. Benson's recommendation?
So how does that?
I'd like to make, go ahead, Mr. Collins.
January 19th. Is there a motion to not allow the other learners in on that date?
That is what I asked. Ms. Oliver?
I'd like to make a motion that in-person learning begin January 21st and include priority learners only as defined by the King George County Schools instructional matrix presented by Dr. Benson this evening.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so it is moved and seconded that we proceed with in-person learning as defined in the instructional modality matrix on Thursday, January 24th, as recommended by Dr. Benson?
21st, 21st.
I was actually following, I was actually following Robert's rules and restating the motion so that we could commence the discussion. So that being said, is there any additional discussion? Ms. Panzira?
Yes, I would like to make some comments. You know, so, you know, here we go again. We're going and we're pulling the rug out from everybody. You know, we've got a majority of the people back from August that, you know, they want their kids in school. You know, it's a risk mitigation. We've spent $724,000 to take 90% of the COVID particles out of the air to protect our children and our teachers. You know, we're doing all of these risk mitigations. We've heard from people that they want to get back to school, and yet here we sit again, and we're changing it at the last minute. I don't understand how we can do this to our constituents and our families and our teachers. There's many teachers out there that want to return, you know, and, you know, I'm sorry, but we are one of two districts in the community, the surrounding community, that has not sent our students back. And, you know, that in itself should tell you that, you know, we're falling short, failing our constituents, our families, and our students. I think this is a tragedy right now that we would change it yet again.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Panzira. Ms. Hawk?
Yes, I'd like to state that I really agree with Ms. Panzira. I certainly do. However, I acknowledge what the headlines in the paper are saying, and the hospitals are full. I have had, honestly, Mr. Collins, I have had more contacts, both on the phone and by email and by text, telling me that they do not want the schools to reopen at this point in time. And that's the emphasis. It's at this point in time. I have had more, and I did count them up. I can't, and there were just a couple more tonight. I can't tell you the number, but the majority are for a delay in implementation. And in fact, if we bring K2 back, we are beginning the reintegration process. I think this is a good start and that we will reevaluate in two weeks. That, frankly, that was the whole point for my feeling and a need for this to be an action item so that we could make some changes, but not disregard the need for in-person learning. We are not disregarding that need, Ms. Panzira. You are correct. We are, we must get back to in-person learning. But this is the most critical point of the transmission as Dr. Benson has presented. I think it, it's scary to bring K2 back, but I do think it's a beginning, and our mitigations are hopefully adequate for that beginning.
Thank you, Ms. Hawk. Ms. Oliver, any additional discussion?
I just want to, I guess, clarify what Ms. Panzera said, and I do agree with Ms. Panzera and Ms. Hawk that we all want our kids back in school. It's just a matter of when. But none of the surrounding districts are sending kids back currently. They're all staying virtual, at least for the immediate future. So I'm not sure where that information came from, but it's inaccurate.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Oliver. Mr. Collins?
So first off, for the motion, you know, I would object to how the motion came, to circumvent the process to have it on a discussion item and then have it for a vote is just not transparent and is not, is not good serving our community. You know, we've been telling the community for, since the beginning of the year, beginning of the summer, last summer, that we're going to start, you know, and continually change that. If you allow, don't allow the students that want to go back to school and need to go back to school, I think that you're not, we're not doing our duty. You have, you know, I talk about equity, and you all talk about equity, and I am just, I just can't believe that we would even be entertaining some of these things. We currently, are we going to get rid of football and basketball and all the other sports to where all the kids are going? Is that on the table too? You know, that's not an opportunity for transmission. Why wouldn't we have our primary source of education addressed?
I have.
I wasn't, I was pausing. I wasn't finished. So as far as, you know, I heard a comment saying that the teachers aren't being treated well. Well, I would, I would object to that comment. Every decision that's been made on this board and, well, that I can address, has been in the interest of all people. The teachers, I mean, that money and students, all that money spent was for the, what they told me, told me personally what they, what they wanted, and that's what was done. And then the bar changes. I don't know if we can ever reach the bar for a certain percentage of teachers to ever feel safe. We had the vaccine coming the 20th and 19th. I, so I would, when the time comes, I would object to the, to the motion.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Panzira.
Yeah, I just, I just, I just want to put a little bit of facts out there. So we are currently in the green for, on our second indicators for percentage, percent change in new cases for per 100,000 population, we are at negative 26.4%, which means that in the last seven days, our cases positivity rate has gone down minus 26%. You know, currently, we have 3% of, 3% of our population has been infected by the COVID, and currently, we have one out of 150 people that are, have COVID right at this moment. You know, I mean, I know it's real. There's no doubt about it. But it's a risk that, you know, I think that we, as board members, don't have the right to tell other people what risk they need to take. There's so many other hardships out there, financial hardships, physical hardships. These children are suffering, families are suffering, and we need to get them back in schools where it's safe for them. And the ionization, reducing the COVID by 90% is the best place we're going to be.
Yeah, Ms. Hawk, any additional comments?
I had one and it escaped me. I'm sorry.
Certainly. Ms. Oliver, additional comments?
So I'd like to address Mr. Collins quickly, because he made a comment about, I guess I'll use the word protocol and how we've been addressing things. So in our last three meetings, at least, he's made motions that weren't even on the table, so I'm not sure how he can speak to that. Secondly, I think that, yes, we get emails from parents who want their kids back in school, and I get that. We also get a lot of emails from staff who don't feel safe, and I think we need to honor that. And I don't think we're at a place right now where we're ready to, when numbers are spiking, and we haven't even had the results back from the holidays and all that, that it's just going to be uglier in the next few weeks. I just think everybody needs to take a deep breath and stay virtual and do the best we can until we can get to a place where everybody feels confident and it's safe. The ionization system is awesome, but that's good for flus, and some of our buildings are older, and that system is certainly going to be beneficial to us for years to come. So I don't feel like we wasted any money doing that. We did it in a time-conscious way because of the situation, but I think it's going to be beneficial for years to come. And I had a couple other thoughts, but I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. Mr. Collins, any final comments?
Just one. So several board members are addressing me. I am not the anti or for, I'm for what is best. So I would appreciate if you wouldn't address me personally for comments. You can address the comment, but not, not, not me. I don't think that's proper.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Collins.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Hawk?
Yes, I would like to comment on the potential delay in that the date that a board member mentioned we can begin immunizations, vaccinations, is January 20th. My information today from a medical personnel was that there's a 28-day timeframe from the first vaccination until immunity, to whatever extent, is going to be established. So I don't, I think it is appropriate that we begin this priority student, that we continue this priority student population with the addition of K2, and 28 days later, complete our, the rest of our student population. I guess that's, that's my thought.
So if they're not going to school, can they go to sports?
Mr. Collins, we're not discussing sports. We're discussing returning our priority learners to school. All right, I believe we've discussed this ad nauseam this evening, so the motion is on the table, so let's take a vote.
Madam Chair, would you repeat the motion?
Certainly. The motion was to proceed with in-person learners, which includes the addition of K2 at this point in time, on Thursday, January 21st, in accordance with Dr. Benson's recommendation. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I will categorically reject the vote as not the will of the citizens of King George County. At this point, I, as the only elected board member, that ran opposed for this position, which is indicative of the will of our citizens, will vote neither yea or nay on this matter and only enter my vote as present. Present to mean that my votes regarding this matter have been discounted by way of attrition.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Panzira. Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Moving on to our discussion items, first up, we have the Virginia School Board Association Code of Conduct for School Board Members, which I believe was the last page of our board packet.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is annually distributed by your organization to reinforce the code of conduct for school board members. It's distributed to school boards across Virginia who subscribe to the VSPA. So again, this year, it's provided for you as members of the King George County School Board.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. Are there any questions? Discussion? Ms. Oliver?
No discussion, no questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Benson. Moving on to number nine, information items. We'll begin with committee reports. Ms. Panzira, do you have any committee reports?
Yeah, I have only one committee report. The bylaws committee that was formed last year has been meeting. They didn't meet over the holiday. We're going to try to meet next week. They're making great strides in trying to formulate some type of bylaws, and we're looking forward to being able to present that to the board soon.
Thank you. Ms. Hawk?
No committee reports.
Thank you. Ms. Oliver?
No committee reports. Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
No committee reports.
Okay, so I attended the Title I Advisory Committee meeting on December 16th before the holidays. So they gave a number of updates. Two schools this year are serviced by Title I. King George Elementary qualifies for school-wide assistance, and Sealston Elementary qualifies for the targeted assist program, and Potomac did not qualify this year. Those are qualification dates as of June 1st this past year, I believe. So the committee gave an overview of intervention methods across the schools, which primarily consisted of dream box and early literacy groups. There was discussion that took place regarding the annual survey, which is usually issued in the November or December timeframe. This year, they're considering issuing the survey in February, which would be potentially aligned with the interims. For King George Elementary, a focused survey to Title I families is being considered in addition to a climate survey for the rest of the student population, since they are, in fact, a school that qualifies for school-wide assistance. Family involvement events this year have been different, clearly. The schools organized outside bag pickups with enrichment materials and activities for students. And the committee also did provide, commented on feedback that they've received from parents this year, which have commended the committee and staff members on how smoothly things have gone this year, even throughout the virtual environment, and that communication has been great. They did comment that a clear benefit to the virtual environment was that many families have been much more willing this year to provide email addresses, good email addresses that they can, that they check and can rely upon, and are therefore more prepared to receive electronic communications. And that is all. So that concludes committee reports. Next up, we have I suppose, an update on the Honeywell needlepoint bipolarization ionization system.
Yes, and I, thank you, Madam Chair. I got ahead of myself a little bit, knowing, not knowing, well, I mentioned it already, that I'm happy to say that the the air ionization systems that the board invested in have been installed and are functioning as we sit here today. So that's, that work is complete.
Okay, thank you.
You want me to roll into the next?
Certainly.
Okay, the next, next item was regarding school division staff childcare. I've had questions, continue to come regarding childcare. Here's, I've talked with Ms. Williams at the YMCA. What we will do in terms of the staff childcare that's being provided for our staff members is we will continue the staff childcare until such a time as we have all students back in person. And at that time, of course, we'll need to utilize the entire facility to host students, and we simply wouldn't be able to host the childcare. So until such a day as we have all students in person, the school division childcare will remain available to those staff members who are utilizing. We may very well have some adjustments in terms of consolidation of sites, given the lower numbers that we may experience as we proceed with more students coming in person. For those staff members who would need, my, my, I'm affording those employees when we do have. my, I'm affording those employees, when we do have students in person, we no longer have the childcare, their students, staff member students then would be permitted to attend on blue or gold, and gold rather, days. In other words, when school's in session, the employees of children, so that they can report to work and provide what we need to provide for all students. They would be permitted to have their students attend on both blue and gold school days. So I hope that helps to answer questions I'm receiving from the school division staff. And we'll certainly put that out tomorrow in writing to our staff members.
Question?
Thank you.
Ms. France?
So there is a dollar amount on that last child care, and as that funds run out, and how will additional be paid for?
Yeah, and it's a good question. Tomorrow morning, I have a phone call with Dr. Lane, the state superintendent, where we're going to hear information regarding CARES II or funding that is being delivered to school divisions through the most recent stimulus bill at the federal level. Reading the appropriate uses of that money, childcare would qualify as an appropriate expenditure for that funding source.
But the board hadn't voted on that for additional childcare. Is that correct?
Well, obviously, we've not received that money, so therefore you are correct.
And the other question on childcare is how many, how many children are in the childcare?
I'd have to, I'd have to ask her and get a number for you. I don't want to guess. As to the numbers, but I think we had close to eighty, eighty to one hundred students.
And they're in schools, right?
The childcare centers are in schools. That is correct. I think they may have at one time had an overflow at their Y M C A center, but I believe at this time they're in schools. To answer, just to, I didn't add to your previous question. If the board were to not approve funding, then obviously it would result in the staff. We would have to offer it for a charge to staff then.
So I have a question. Go ahead. So, Dr. Benson, I've asked several times about the number of students per day because I believe we pay by the day or the week, and I don't believe that the count of children for each day is consistent. So I just have a sense that we are actually paying for childcare that we are not utilizing. I've asked personally in an email several times, and I would think that that is probably pertinent information that we need to know.
Sure. Can you repeat, and I'll get it for you tomorrow morning? You want the number of students per center?
The numbers, so I went to visit one day, and I asked one of the childcare providers, I said, how many students are in the class? And they said, well, it varies depending on day and week. Sometimes we have eight, sometimes we have ten, some come, some don't. So it's obvious that, you know, if we're paying for ten children every day, sometimes, some days we only have eight, sometimes we have six. And, you know, I think that that's important, that the teachers know that we're paying for childcare, whether their child is there or not. That's an added expense that, you know, I don't, I don't think that, maybe they don't realize that, but, you know, we, I think it's important that we know if we're paying X amount of dollars, what percentage of that, of the childcare are we actually getting?
So again, the information you're requesting is the number of children per center attending?
I can't understand what you're saying. All I hear is number, and then...
So you're asking for the number of children per center, per center that are attending? Is the information you're requesting?
No, I'm asking the number of children that are attending per center per day, and what are we paying for based on the number of people per center per day? I believe that number is different.
I guess obviously I'd need a list of the days, the per day that you would like.
Every day.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a comment, please.
Go ahead, Ms. Oliver.
So in my experience with daycare, you pay for the space. So if you pay for five days a week, and maybe one day you have to take your child to a doctor's appointment, or one day your child is sick, it doesn't matter, you still pay for that space. So I assume we're paying for childcare per day, per child, for the space, not necessarily their presence every single day?
That's correct. And the question that I have is how many spaces, if that's what you want to call them, or days, are we paying where we are, we do not have those children there? Ms. Hawke, did you have a comment?
That was what I was going to comment on, is that, that we are essentially reserving a space. It would be a good statistic to have to know what utilization of that space. I guess to clarify for Dr. Benson, we're looking perhaps for the utilization, the percentage utilization per week or something like that?
Yeah, I'm just not certain that, you know, maybe the, I like to give people the benefit of the doubt. Maybe the teachers don't realize that if, if they're pay, if their, their child can go to daycare four days a week, and they only send them two days a week, that we still have to pay for those other two days.
I would have a question. How many people that are on the medical exempt list are sending their children to the daycare?
I don't know.
That's the question I'm asking you to get the information for.
So I believe that even if a teacher is medically exempted, they're still teaching virtually. I don't think there would be anything wrong with them still sending their child to daycare.
I didn't make that inference. I should ask the question.
Okay, fair enough. Dr. Benson, I had a question. When you commented on the, about the, the childcare would continue until that all students are back in the buildings, and then that, and then that staff students would be allowed to attend on blue and gold days, or essentially to the extent required such that their parents could continue teaching? Is that, I assume that's basically to, to prevent, is there a gap in there? Is there a period of time where all students are back, that, that, that staff would be stuck with a childcare issue? I'm assuming not, that the intent is for it to be seamless.
That's the intent, is to, you know, if students were to, they're presuming that their students would, would need to then attend in person, but attend for four days a week instead of two, so that the employee then would be able to teach or do whatever their job responsibility says for that day.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions for Dr. Benson on the childcare update?
I just want to make sure that we're not presuming that we are, with the update, that we are approving additional funds for childcare. That's all.
Okay, no intent to approve childcare funds at this time? All right, moving on to superintendent's report. If Dr. Benson, you have anything additional?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just two quick updates. We've mentioned it here a couple of times, but I want to remind staff, we are included in Group One B, and correspondence has been sent to employees to provide them an opportunity to choose to receive the vaccine or not. Either way, if they could respond to that, that's helpful in setting the appointment for those who do and accounting for those who do not, to ensure that everybody had the opportunity and we're not missing anybody. As I mentioned just briefly, I do anticipate receiving information tomorrow regarding a second round of CARES Act funding for the school division, and I'll bring that information that I learned back to the board as an update next meeting. Next regular meeting.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Benson. Moving on to board comment. Ms. Panzira?
Yes. So we live in a time where there is short-term risk and long-term risks. Every day, we make a decision on what risk we are willing to take from something as simple as if I drink this cup of coffee, I might burn my mouth, or risk that we have no control over, like driving a car. Some risks we take, we don't even realize they are risks. I make those choices every day based on what is best for me and my family. It is not our responsibility to decide what risk is best for our school families. They need a choice. For the exception of Caroline, every district around us has had some form of personal learning. A majority of the families have been given a choice. Our community needs that choice. Our decision to yet again change the plan shows the decisions of the board is based on fear and not the well-being of our children. We need to let all our families decide what the risk they are willing to take for their families. We had a teacher slash parent mention that the toll on teachers has been difficult. Physically, returning to in-person will only increase, and that there is a chance that it could have more hardship for, on her financially if she was forced to leave her position. And I ask, what about the families and the children that are living those hardships right now? Families are struggling and children are hurting, and we are doing them a big disservice. I also am quite upset, and I believe that it was very presumptuous of the chair and the superintendent to place the return to school update on the agenda as an action, forcing a vote on a plan that had already been approved, and was obvious that the intent was to overturn that decision as it had been. This forces a personal agenda on all board members. It shows a very strong lack of transparency, and it should infuriate our constituents for this type of behavior. It is also clear that putting virtual teachers who do not require a sub listed in the absent category as a misrepresentation as to what is really needed and raise the numbers to make it look or sound like we cannot meet the staff requirements. Again, supporting a personal agenda of not returning our kids to school, the games must stop. We need our transparency on the board, and we owe it to our community to practice our code of contact, conduct. Specifically, number four, which states, "I will make policy decisions based on the available facts and appropriate public input." And number twelve, "I will always remember that the foremost concern of the board is to improve and enhance the teaching and learning experience for all students in the public schools of Virginia." That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Panzira. Ms. Hawke?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. My first comment is that I've received information about a potential webinar available to board members presented by the Virginia School Board Association. The webinar will be on March seventeen of two thousand and twenty-one, and the, the topics are equity issues and board communication processes. And I would like to suggest that we, as a board, sign up for that webinar, and it is, of course, virtual, and attend that so that perhaps on both areas, we can improve our skills. Secondly, I would like to see us add a, a, an additional piece of information to our website that I think we've discussed before, and that's the number of cases identified as positive COVID per school. And I did appreciate the quarantine information provided also. So I do think, certainly, we want to maintain confidentiality, but I think it is valuable to have those numbers identified on our website. I believe other school systems are doing that. Secondly, I do have an educator concern, a concern for educators and staff that has been communicated several times to me by a fairly large number of families, at least across the elementary level. And I don't, I don't know whether it applies to high school and middle school or not, but, but some families have relayed that it does. My concern is about locking out students on a time-conceived basis about submitting work. I don't see how any educator can lock out students from submitting their work regardless of whether it's two hours later, or a day later, or a week later. I think many of our families are still struggling with internet issues, with family issues. And I don't know that a student of any age, frankly, is completely independent. And most of our families have done exceptional jobs of supporting their educators. And, and yes, it is important to submit work on time, but not all students can do that in this epidemic and in this situation. I'm asking for the administrators to review those policies and discuss with their staff the fact that students should be allowed to submit work at any point in time that they can get it submitted. I, I think it's essential to have flexibility in this situation. I do want to speak to the discussion tonight. I, I don't think there is any right answer. I don't think anyone is a hundred percent correct in their thinking or their philosophy or, or how we can manage this decision from day to day. I do know that we have to get our children back in school, but I also know that we have to do so safely for our staff and our families. At this point in time, I, I think we can go on a every-two-week update, and frankly, if a miracle should happen and, and everyone gets vaccinated and our numbers get, go down, and the positivity rate for the region is good, and we are responding to the metric that Dr. Benson has developed, then yes, we can proceed earlier. But I think it's appropriate that we have made this step. We have made progress tonight in opening up our building and in-person learning to the most vulnerable. Yes, I hope within two weeks, we can proceed to another level, because they also are vulnerable. But I ask for your patience and tolerance. I ask that you please do not intimidate or try to threaten any staff or board member. I ask that you be calm. And my last message is a note of sympathy and, and concern for the family of the Capitol Police Officer Sicknick, who was killed last week. We have law enforcement in our community who worked with him, who knew him well, and our, our prayers are for his family for peace. Thank you.
Ms. Oliver?
I'm sorry. I just want to say for the record that I've been participating remotely for the last two weeks because I've not been feeling well, and I don't want people to be subjected to my germs. I have not had a COVID test, so I don't know that I'm infectious or not. I have nothing else to add to the comments just made, and I agree with many of them. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Mr. Collins?
This evening, I'm astonished at the way that we have circumvented the transparency of, of the agenda. And I, I think we owe it to the people of King George to do the process right. I think that the school board, we have failed yet again to represent our majority of our constituents. And I, I think that will show in later times. Also, it's been a pleasure to serve on the school board for the last seven and a half years. And November will be the end of my term, and I will not seek reelection for school board member. I, I, it bothers me sometimes to, some of the emails that I receive that would, would be in regards to not supporting teachers. I can tell you for the entire time that I've been on this board that my thoughts and actions have always been to support our staff, our students, and our citizens. I will seek the, I will be a candidate for the Board of Supervisors in James Road District in November. Thank you.
All right. As for my board comment, I would like to add that my decision to vote, as I did this evening, is not based on fear, but on that which is best for our students, our staff, and our school division as a whole. My decision this evening was in fact based on available facts, appropriate public input. And I would also add that my first and foremost concern as a school board member is in fact to improve and enhance the teaching and learning experience for all students in the public schools, specifically of King George County. And on that note, do we have a motion to proceed with closed meeting?
I don't have the motion. Point two, seven-one-one, point A, point one, like to move to closed meeting for the purpose of discussion, consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, substitutes, resignation, and retirement of employees of the school board.
Do we have a second?
Second, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Now on closed meeting.
I move that the King George County School Board return to open session and certify that pursuant to State Code 2.2-3712.D, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body.
Second is certified.
Certified. Ms. Tolliver, I'm gone. Probably so.
So, she had to certify?
No, I was just putting, John, are you confirming that Ms. Tolliver's online? Ms. Tolliver? All right. Ms. Tolliver, you rejoin us, speak up. All right. Certify, any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Collins?
Second, certified.
Okay. Chair votes aye. Do we have a motion, motion carries? We're now in open session. Do we have a motion to accept personnel as presented?
I make a motion that we accept personnel, personnel as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair, Ms. Tolliver, you online? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Do we motion to adjourn?
Go move. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries, we're now adjourned.